The historic board has a laptop charger though, so I have to, I had to start it on the computer in the office.
Could have your attention please, we'll be starting up shortly. Good evening and welcome to the Lowell Planning Board for Monday, October 18, 2021. The first matter on our agenda this evening is the approval of the September 23 minutes. What's the request for the board for the, any requests for approval or any amendments or anything?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of September 23 as submitted.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor say aye.
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 Chair votes yes. Any opposition? Hearing none, those motions are, those minutes are approved. Second matter on the agenda is the approval of the minutes for October 4.
Chairman, I would like to abstain since I'm not present.
Okay, so Caleb won't be voting, he wasn't here at the last meeting, so I'll make a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor say aye.
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 And your, and your opposition? Hearing none, those minutes are approved, four in favor and none against. Moving along on the agenda, we have a continued business for site plan review and a special permit for 545 Broadway Street. Ernest Durante has applied to the planning board on behalf of El Fosio Mamalo for a site plan review and special permit approval of the above address. The applicant is seeking to convert existing warehouse into 12-unit residential building. The property is in the urban mixed-use zoning district. The proposal requires special permit and site plan review approval from the planning board to create more than three dwelling units. Variance approval for the zoning board for relief for dimensional and off-street parking requirements and any as relief required by the Lowell zoning ordinance. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Hey, how are you? Thank you for having me here. The last time we spoke about those units there, I know that there were, we had some question been asked for and we did answer all of them on my recollection. For the, trying to open this up here to make sure that we have everything in place here. Okay. I know we have talked about the landscape, which is we had the trees on the sidewalk. We did eliminate that because we didn't, it couldn't, we couldn't fit it, fit them in properly because of the size of it. And for the parking, we reduced that to about 15 parking because we had to do some work in the outside due to the, to the elevation. So we, we can only put two parkings outside instead of having four parking previously. The other changes, I think it's about, that's about it. Everything else stays the same. And we did, in my recollection, the last time we were here, we talked about having an handicap parking, which is we, we showed that on the plan. We have also chosen elevator from the basement to the first floor. And the, the utility is going to be staying at the same location because they are already existing there. We're not doing anything from the outside, so everything stays there. That's been the sprinkler system, the, the electrical and the water system, the sewer system, all these are remaining to be the same, at the same location. If there's any question, please. Okay. No, no, Bob, did you have it? I tried to open it. I end up falling here, I don't know why. Take a look, I end up falling. I don't know what is there. Yeah, I'll give you one of the hot cup.
Peter, are they trying to bring it up on the screen or?
Uh, they were.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, yeah, no, it's okay.
Oh, no, not, not actually the sewage, actually they are in the plane. And he has a hot coffee on the hot plane. So, yeah, I just, I don't know why it's not opening it. It's a Bruno drive. Let me try another drive, I do have another drive. Yeah, see if we can, yeah, let's try it.
Okay, is it, what this is here that it's given or is it something different?
Um, that's an update of the second, of the second page of this one.
The same thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
You want to thank this little bit? Russell, it's a copy of one, I think.
We can all have one here, okay.
Do you, do you need this?
Uh, no. So on this plan here, that's the second page, that's the updated version of the second page. Because on the last meeting, we were talking about the dimension, the dimension of the parkings. So you end up having all these things properly located.
So what else did you add to this plan besides the parking?
It was the, the landscape, which is we showed here. The landscape, we have one on the right corner and one on the left corner. We add more landscape closer to the, to the building in the back of the parking. And then in the front of it, we have the dumpster, which is, those were the things that we talked about the last time. And what I had a recommendation were to, to have the trees on the sidewalk, but they won't fit, so we eliminated them.
So we received a memo on October 13th from the city engineer's office. Do you have a copy of that?
Uh, that's for...
It was five, six items on it. It was to Fran from the engineer's office, the site plan. Engineering has reviewed the submission, has the following comments.
That's for the drainage, right?
Uh, it talks about if the plan is to be reused, the existing sewer and water service proposed condition.
Right, we do, we do, we did have that and I did ma, I did send an email for the
So did...
work that we did with the camera, I do have that. I give you that.
Okay, so you did receive that, okay, got you, yeah.
I did, I did give the tom drive for that.
Okay.
For the...
Okay.
Beautiful. So that's right there, I did email it also. That was...
Okay, yeah, Mr. Fischette just pointed out to me, I just wanted to make sure they do so and we have the comments wanted for that, yeah. Because a lot of times people have seen this on the webpage but haven't seen the comments wanted, they might have the same questions. So... Anything else you want to add?
Well, that's about it.
Okay. Anybody else with you want to speak?
Uh, let me say something.
Just give me a name and address for record, please.
Good evening, gentlemen. Michelle Ashkar from Ashkar Engineering and Surveying. Our place of business, 70 Washington Street, Unit 306 in Havro, Mass. Basically, I'm just here, you know, to answer any question coming from the board regarding the site plan. The creation of the driveway leading to the basement of the building. And creating, you know, some landscape following some recommendation that was submitted to us in regard to the proposed area for, for snow pile in the winter time and it will serve the same area as the perennial flowers during the spring and summer and fall. Now, we created an infiltration system and we already got in touch with the stormwater team, Mr. Mike Stewart. And we're following his recommendation and we answered, you know, some question that he had for us. And those will be addressed accordingly to what the stormwater team needs to, to to merit their support on this project. In regard to the sidewalk, the three proposals, okay, the, I will explain it in more details. They wanted those three, you know, to have the cover, you know, the base cover on the roots, which is by four feet, they come standard. But again, the regulation called that they need another four feet for the, for the sidewalk, you know, for access from wheelchairs or pedestrian, and that doesn't make that clearance. I have total of seven and a half feet. So that didn't make the clearance. And my suggestion, you know, we can get away with this three proposed trees and since the sidewalk remaining the same, we're not changing the sidewalk. With the same elevation, the same flow of runoff on it. So I suggest to the board that there will be no, I mean, we put some proposed flower vase, but again, flower vase, you know, we, we're dealing with snow and snow piles, you know, generated from the street and those they could break on the long run. Landscape was addressed again in accordance to the recommendation that came from the, the board. And we created, you know, some landscape within the property line. Within the boundary line of this property. And the dumpster, proposed dumpster, okay, we proposed the dumpster to be far away from the building and within accessibility from the loading truck. That's basically what I have addressed on this site plan. We have the waivers, you know, that with the table of zoning board for variance approval. If you can see that, that again, it will, this plan will serve as both to the planning board as well as the zoning board. Because there is some zoning, you know, relief that we might, we asking for. In regard to spaces, car spaces, you know, as well as side yard at back, those spaces. Since the property existing, so we're just showing them in the table. Some other concern that the board came up with was the, the opening of the curb opening to be extended and we extended by 16.7 feet since it was, you know, 39.7. These basically the things that we, we had to address and showing the parking stalls within the building as well as outside.
So going back to the comment that I mentioned earlier, the ones from October 13th from Fran, to Fran from the city engineer's office, one through six. I'm reading those and I'm not understanding whether you're complying with those or not. So could we address those one through six, please?
The...
The letter we got October 13th from the city engineer's office. It talks about sidewalks, it talks about planters, it talks about driveways, it talks about right-of-way. And your responses do not say, they just says, yeah, we'll include certain things, but doesn't say so. For example, concrete sidewalks, number six. So let's start with number one. So number one, if the plan is to be used, the existing sewer service in the proposed condition, applicant have, have the sewer service video inspected.
That stays the same. When it comes to the, that's the utilities, which is the sewer system. We did mention that, that stays the same.
So are you going to do the video inspection for...
Yeah, we do have that. I did send an email about that and I have the, I have the tom drive here.
Okay. So number two, are we going with the, are you still using the planter?
Uh, we're not putting the trees, the trees that goes on the sidewalk, they'll be omitted.
Okay. So we don't need the planter now, right? No, okay. Okay, so number three, any type of paving of the sidewalk, driveway, driveway opening, lots etc., where the asphalt, concrete, other material is required with paving permit, so you'll get, you'll do that, the paving permit?
Yeah, no, yeah.
Okay. You have to submit that to the engineer's office, okay? Any work being conducted through the city of Lowell by the way will require a street opening, so you'll take care of that?
Correct.
Okay. All construction completed and right of way shall conform to the ADA, okay, and AAB, okay. So getting back to number six, applicant shall include utility plan, which is the existing plan and proposed plan and grading plan.
We, we don't have a proposed plan because it's an existing building. Everything already there. So we don't have to do anything from the outside of the building.
So, but you can show, well, you'll have a utility plan, right, which is existing and so is the existing one going to stay the same?
That's the same, yes.
Okay, so show the existing one and say it's going to be the same.
Yeah, we do show an existing.
Okay. And then, are you going to do new concrete sidewalks in front of the property?
Concrete sidewalk.
Concrete?
The, the one that we are, we have stays the same, we're just going to remodel it, we're going to replace it with new, with new concrete. Following the elevation that already exists. Because what happened is we don't want to bring the elevation toward the, the parking because that will create a problem. So we leave it the same way, we're just extending it.
Okay, because...
I think we're extending it about 17 feet, like it was.
Yeah, because then you got the ADA compliant sidewalk will include the grading, right?
That's right.
Because you need that for the, okay, okay. All right, so you'll be able to do the ADA with the sidewalk for the grading so that, the same as the granite curb, right?
Right.
Okay. And like you said, the planter is going to be omitted, correct? Okay. Those are the only questions I had as a result of the engineer questions, okay. Anything else from the applicant before we turn it over to the public and the rest of the board members?
That's about it.
Okay.
That's it for us.
I'm sorry?
That's it for us.
Okay, okay. At this point in time, I'll turn it over to the public and see if they have any comments? Anybody like to speak in favor of this project? Anybody in favor? In favor, in favor? Hearing none. Anybody in opposition? In opposition, in opposition, in opposition? Hearing none. Anybody with just any general comments? Any comments? We have nobody commenting on Zoom, correct? Okay, thank you. Okay, this time I'll turn it over to the board members if they have any questions. Okay, this time I'll turn it over to the board members if they have any questions.
I have one.
Yes, Mr. Lottat?
Regarding outside lighting and glare, did you address outside lighting at all?
I'm sorry, I.
Outside lighting around?
Oh, outside lighting, yeah, we did mention that, that's right on, I'm sorry about that. That's right on top of the parking, the parking door, where the car goes under the basement. It's right there, it's only, it's only, uh, uh, emotion light we have there, that's about it. I mean, the street already have lights in it. The building gonna be very lit. Yeah. And that's mentioned in the plan also.
That's all I have right now.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lottat. Any other board members? Caleb, go ahead.
You're not going to put lighting at the staircase?
Uh, the staircase, I mean, code wise, we need it. I mean, that's, it's automatically gonna be coming because the code requires it, so. That's, that's definite, we're gonna have that.
You're gonna put lighting, avoid creating glare off?
I just have them off. Avoid creating glare onto, you know, onto the right of way. You know, I know, I know the staircase is pretty close to the, to the sidewalk, so.
Right.
So I don't know, if you don't have a lighting plan, it's, then, then somebody will determine whether those glare will spill over, right? So how you position the light?
That's correct, that's correct. I positioned the light, that's gonna make a big difference. I mean, what we didn't wanna have is, you know, it's gonna be a motion light. We don't wanna create something that's gonna give form to pedestrian there, so we're gonna have to bring the, the light down with a certain lumen, that's something will be taken care of.
Okay.
To make sure everything goes well with the project.
So probably too light there?
Right.
Okay. And what is going to happen in the five feet and, like, on the, between lot, your lot and also lot one-one-nine-seven-nine-five and five-three?
So that would be on the left side of the building, if I'm, if I'm right about that?
Left side facing the street? Like so? So this side?
Or to, or to that side. Actually, there's nothing gonna be there, it's gonna be just grass.
Okay.
Two reason for that percolation, we don't want the water to accumulate and go back to the front of the building, so.
Okay, so, so is it currently glass, uh, grass right now, or is it?
Right now, it's grass, yes.
It's grass, okay. So, I suppose it'll be clear too, so that, you know, that will be loamed and has got grass on it, but, but good to know.
Right.
And I just wanted to make a comment that I think staff still, still have a comment about working with stormwater, have you worked with the stormwater team of the city? The stormwater?
Oh, the stormwater? Uh, we, we working on it and we already submitted plan for the drainage.
Okay.
The, the drainage calculation is already been done, it's just that some technicality need to be resolved and our engineers are working on that.
Great, Mr.? Yeah, we contacted Mr. Stewart and, and he's preparing the punch list for us, okay, to what they demand in order to meet the, all the requirements that they asking for. In regard to the stormwater, to the, the infiltration system, the way we designed it. They asked for more, you know, the, all the calculation, how we came up with the, the design. And another thing too, that's, again, I, I would not divulge anything before I get, I receive the, the punch list from Mr. Stewart.
So, so would you, would you be okay with the condition that you satisfied their requirements?
Yeah, yeah, definitely.
Thank you.
Definitely.
Um, I think the last thing is, so we're looking at the parking calculation, so you will be providing three less than the required number, is that correct? The required number of parking spaces.
Parking spaces? Right, actually, that's what we are, we requesting a variance for that because we're not having enough parking for it. So we only, we only providing fifteen parking for now. And I know the requirement exceed that.
So fifteen right now, right?
Fifteen right now, that's ten, yes.
Okay, and you have twelve units?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Caleb. Last one, any questions or comments?
No, Chairman, I think all, all the questions have been, that I have, have been asked already. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Bichette?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I appreciate the applicant responding to the comments from, from staff and, and getting them to staff before the meeting, so then we could get some comments. And I know the engineering letter that you received was October twelfth or whatever, I believe it was, and you did respond an email relatively quickly, which was, again, appreciate that as well.
Sure, thank you.
I just, I, I think you've addressed a lot of what the original concerns were. The, I understand the, as far as the facade of the building, that's really the historic board purview and not, not for the planning board at this stage. In the plan I'm looking at, and although DPD comments are, maybe I'm just missing it, I can't seem to locate where the street trees are gonna be located.
That's why we, the street trees, we omit that because we didn't have enough space. The requirement.
You omitted, okay, and you omitted the concrete vases and omitted the street trees? Okay, I just wanted to make sure I was clear on that, because I didn't see it on the plan, but then I was looking at some comments.
Right, we did take it out, yeah.
Okay, so, so, all right, so you, so there will not be any street trees?
Right.
All right, I just wanna make sure I was clear on that.
Right, right.
Okay. No, and I think, you know, taking into account the neighborhood and the existing development, I think you're making an effort to put some landscaping in there and it probably wanna be one of the more attractive.
Right.
Looking properties with what you're proposing, so I'm okay with that, I just, if we're gonna approve it, I wanna understand what exactly is going on here.
Sure.
So from that perspective, I think, Mr. Chairman, I think, and, and just again, to clarify the, and it was really so that you don't have to ask for as much of a variance, but the, I didn't see, are you going with the car share, a car share spot, or no?
I'm sorry?
A car share location is suggested by DPD so that your, your request for variances is, is, the threshold isn't as high, or are you not going with that? I, I just, curious.
I don't think we have any problem with that, do we?
I mean, it's gonna require the zoning board of appeals for your variance. I just curious if you were going to take advantage of that and utilize that.
I don't think so, no.
Okay, no, fair enough.
Yeah, I don't think, yeah, I, I think.
Mm-hmm, yes. Twenty-four, yes.
We are short by nine.
Yeah. Okay.
How do we do?
No, I think they were just suggesting that if you utilize the car share, you could reduce the, the maximum requirement and therefore reduce what your, the relief that you're looking for. Just, just wanted clarification on that. Yeah, no, fair enough, fair enough. No, understood, okay. All right, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Okay. I have no questions, only ones I had I addressed early about the engineering ones. So basically, we need two votes tonight before the board, one for a site plan review and one's a special permit. So this request of the board regards to the site plan and this special permit.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the special permit with the following conditions, that the applicant comply with requirements of stormwater man, management team. The applicant will ensure that the sidewalks are ADA compliant as required by the city's engineering department. And the applicant will adhere to the, the city's requirement for onsite lighting on the property. And again, there are, there are specific requirements for that, we can't.
Sure.
Emit lighting off the site. And pretty much everything else has been addressed with the plan that was submitted, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so we have a motion for the site plan, do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Seconded by Mr. Lottat. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair vote yes. Any opposition? Hearing none, that motion carries five in favor and none against. Now we need a motion for the special permit.
That was, that was a.
Oh, I'm sorry, that was the special permit, my apologies. That was the special permit. So now we need a motion for the site plan, I apologize for that. So on the site plan, I'll make a motion to approve with the same conditions that was outlined by Mr. Bichette on the special permit, which would be to work with stormwater, make sure the sidewalks are compliant and the lighting onsite as requested by the city. So that's a motion by myself with the chair, do we have a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Seconded by Mr. Bichette. All in favor, say aye.
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 So therefore that medic, and any opposition? Hearing none, so that motion carries as well. Five in favor and none against. Good luck, wish you well.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Okay, moving along on the agenda, the next matter we have tonight is a site plan review. This is for four-four-five Broadway Street. Common Ground Development Corporation has applied to the low planning board for a site plan review to redevelop an existing gravel parking area to construct a sixteen parking, excuse me, sixteen space parking lot at the above address. The property is located in the UMU zoning district, it requires site plan approval under section eleven point four point two-three to construct a new parking area greater than four thousand square feet. Hey, we have the applicant, please.
Mr. Chairman, before we begin testimony, I just do want to note for the record, I will be recusing myself on this application.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, George Theodoro, one thirty-three Market Street, representing the applicant, Common Ground Development Corporation. Common Ground Development Corporation is being represented here tonight by Mr. Steve Johnkis, who is the director of real estate development. And also with us tonight, appearing remotely, will be Jared Conway, the engineer of Stamsky and McCarny Company. Common Ground Development Corporation is a Massachusetts nonprofit corporation, a subsidiary of community teamwork, also a nonprofit, perhaps one of the largest nonprofit corporations in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. The specific, one of the specific purposes of Common Ground Development Corporation is to provide housing for various income levels, but primarily for low-income housing in Lowell and in the greater Lowell area. This lot that we are looking to repave at four forty-five Broadway is a, is a, is a gravel parking lot. Because of the size of the lot, it being over four thousand square feet and it consists of sixteen parking spaces, under the ordinance, we require a site plan review and we're here before you to get that approval. The part of what has to be done here in order to successfully develop or pave this parking lot is we have to comply with the ordinance and in providing screening, which we've done on the West and the Northerly side, and Jared will go through that with you about how we're gonna do that, to provide a landscape plan for the open space and the percentage that's requiring around the perimeter of the area. And also for every two thousand square feet, we are required to provide one new tree, new shade tree. And we are providing two additional trees and allowing three trees to remain there. We believe this would be a vast improvement over what we have there right now to service our tenants. One of the requirements that I wanted to bring up ahead of time is the, the stormwater requirements with the city of the Lowell Regional Wastewater Utility. I had forwarded Fran communications that our engineer had with Mike Stewart. And the engineer in the communications that we had, number one, would, wanted to interpret whether or not this was gonna be a substantial development, and he concluded that the repaving was not a substantial development. Then the next step in that analysis would be to determine whether or not there is a, there is a catch basin on the property, and there is no catch basin on the property. He received the engineering plan, which showed that the, the drainage goes from the paved area out to Broadway. And he determined that it was not substantial, that we would not be required to do any, any additional drainage for the site, and that we would be required to sweep the site to make sure it's clear of debris to not, to prevent any additional debris to go into the stormwater, water system, and that we would be able to be issued a permit. The particulars of this site right here, I'd like to turn over to Jared Conway, who is, I, he's hooked, he's connected remotely and I believe he's on, so if we could hear from you, Jared?
How you doing, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Uh, for the record, my name's Jared Conway, I'm with Stamsky and McNary at one thousand Main Street in Acton, Massachusetts. George did a great job at kind of outlining what we're trying to do here, just to kind of take you through the plan a little bit. This is roughly a seven thousand square foot lot. We are proposing, the exist, existing gravel parking lot is roughly fifty-three hundred square feet and we are proposing a roughly forty-two hundred square foot, uh, feet paved area. And that, as George said, that does require some open space landscaping. For, in this case, we would be required roughly two hundred and ten square feet of open space landscaping and we are providing roughly thirteen hundred square feet of open space with the required amount of trees per two thousand square feet of, of pavement. As you can see up in this, up to the rear of the property, there is a six-foot-high fence that's required by the zoning by law as well, I think it's six point eight point one for screening. We have annotated our snow storage areas for the winter time towards the rear here and then over towards the, the west. then over toward the, uh, the west. So yeah, I, um, we did, we were in touch with Mike Stewart, and there is no additional stormwater mitigation needed here, just annual sweeping and maintenance. We did take the advice of the city planning and add a bike rack here to encourage alternate modes of transportation. But, you know, that's, that's pretty much it. So I'd like to open it up to questions if anybody has any.
Thank you, Jared.
You're welcome.
And the only other thing I just wanted to point out, I think Jared did show you that we have our snow storage area towards the, the rear of the parking lot and the rear western bound of the lot. Oh, and I'm corrected, we're adding four trees, not two trees, so we're exceeding the minimum required. And you can see the trees are depicted on the plan. There's a tree on both sides of the entrance areas and two trees on the westerly bound. So that fulfills a requirement.
I see, Council, you also include the bike rack as suggested by the planning staff?
We, we did include the bike rack. It's, uh, it's, it's, it's to the, it's to the left of the front, westerly side of the front entrance.
Right, yeah. If you could put that back up on the screen, I think we can see a little better.
Uh, I don't really see it here.
It's, um, down here. If you can, Richard. It's tough down there, these are small, see, but proposed.
Oh, yeah.
Bike rack right there. Yeah. You can see a little better, right, right up there. So this, Council, just briefly going through the comments by staff, you addressed the bike rack, the landscaping, the snow removal and the stormwater permit, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Anything further for the presentation, Council, before you open up to the public?
No, I, I believe we've addressed everything.
Okay.
And addressed the comments of staff.
All right, thank you very much. At this point in time, anybody like to speak in favor of this project? Anybody in favor? In favor? Favor? Hearing none? Anybody in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? Hearing none? Anybody have any general questions? Any questions at all? Hearing none? At this point in time, I'll turn it over to the board members if they have any questions. Mr. Lottat, I'll start with you if you have any questions.
Just have a, maybe a clarification. On page one of the statement of the case, um, under the title "Project, The Project."
Yes.
You got a statement here, "The project will require screening," as set forth in section 6.1.8 of the ordinance.
That is correct.
Must comply with the landscaping of the requirement consistent with the section 6.1.9. Can you just go through that and explain that?
Yeah, the, the screening is the, the fence that we're placing. There's a fence that is going to be placed along the western bound. It'll be a six-foot-high fence and also a six-foot-high fence around the northern bound, which is at the rear of the property.
All right, okay.
And that was the requirements that we had to fulfill it. And the, the landscaping requirements are specifically that we're going to be providing landscape open space within the perimeter of the parking area in the minimum amount of 5% of the gross parking area, which we've done, and which we've depicted along the perimeter of the parking area.
All right, very good, thank you. That's all I have.
Caleb, any questions?
Thank you, Chairman. Are the parking is going to be assigned or are they kind of like open to the?
They...
Pool of residents?
They, they, they've always been random and, and not assigned. They've always been random. We felt that it always worked that way.
Okay. I just noticed that there is no jog at the end of the driving aisle that usually a parking lot for, for turnaround. And, and I understand if, like, that the, the, the space is tight and there probably not a lot of room down there, but, um, like, if you look at the zoning ordinance, like, example, for example, you can see the jog that usually cars have a little more space to turn around, so I, I'm sure, I'm, uh, maybe your engineer can explain a little bit of the thinking on that one. And then also, I would think that particularly with randomized parking, there will be cars that are looking for parking and go all the way to the end, and then there's all full, and now they have to back out all the way and back out to the street. So, um, might have a little concern about that.
Yeah, we, we, you know, I'll have Jared speak on that, that we did comply with the, the spaces and the width and, and length of the spaces to comply with the ordinance. And that, with that, I would have him comment on it that there's enough of a turning radius to come in and out of the property. Jared, do you want to comment on that?
Yes, George, I agree there. We do have 20 feet from in-between spaces, which would give you enough turning radius backing in and turning in. I do see the point of, um, if the, if the parking lot is full and, and having an area to, to turn around in that instance, but as far as parking space width and distance between spaces, there is enough of a turning radius there.
Okay. So, I, I, I recognize the, the width and the dimensions are compliant, in compliance, but I still have that concern, but I, I, I also recognize the landscaping and all that are also in compliance as well, so I know, think a little bit about that. Thank you.
Yeah, we, you know, and, and we are nonprofit, we have a, a minimum budget. Be wonderful if we could, you know, uh, uh, one of the, one of the items that would be problematic with respect to this and, and the landscaping would be planting other shrubs but not having the funds to maintain them. We see that sometimes in some of the projects downtown where there's some green space that's put in, and it, it doesn't work. It's not maintained, it, it looks unsightly.
Understand. My concern is more and more on the, on the realm of safety, right? If, if possible, I do want to minimize car backing out onto a roadway, which is not a street without traffic, so, um, but, but I, I also understand the bigger context as well. So I, I just maybe suggest that for the board to discuss. So, thanks, um...
Steve Johnkis with Common Ground Development Corp. Jared, could I just ask you to talk a little bit about the 20-foot width between the ends of each parking space and the concern about people being able to leave, let's say, the last space at the end of the parking lot to be able to turn out, back out of that space and then make the turn to Broadway Street without having to... Is that feasible or should we add a bump out at the end of the lot?
I think that if, if there was a designated spot for turnaround in lieu of one of the spaces, then that should be able to mitigate the, the need for a turnaround there. I think that, like I said previously, that 20-foot would give you enough turnaround space, so to use a spot in lieu of that, I think would mitigate that concern.
So to be more specific, Jared, you're, you're suggesting eliminating one of the spaces to make it a turnaround spot?
That would be the easiest, um, the easiest way into, to still maximize the amount of spaces that we can fit in that lot.
And, and how would you, where would you designate that space, please?
Would, in order to give enough room for turnaround, you can't have it towards the rear as much, so one of these spots would be probably ideal, give you roughly, you know, 20 feet this way, 20 feet this way, which is acceptable and would be functional for a turnaround.
So we're, we're okay with making that a condition of the approval if, if that works with the board? Thank you, sir.
I appreciate it, and I understand, I don't want to take a parking space away either, but at the same time, I, this is, this is more of a job of a traffic engineer, I, I, but I do come across parking spaces designed in my own line of work, so I, that concern is, I think it's well, well, one to, to really work it out with the DPD.
We agree that that's a reasonable condition.
Thank you.
Anything else, Caleb? No?
Nope. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay. Russell, any questions, comments?
Just one question. Has there been any review by the, like, the, suppose the Lowell Water, Wastewater Division for this, if we're going from an impervious surface to a pervious surface?
No, there has not been.
Okay. Would you be comfortable with the condition after having the Lowell Water and Wastewater review, the plans?
The, part of this, this, uh, the condition that we have here and, and, and the site plan review, that it is in the site plan review that, you know, we're expanding or repaving impervious surface, and that, that's acknowledged all along, that it is impervious surface.
So just one other comment. So the, the existing condition is extremely packeded parking area. It's a mixture of dirt with very little gravel, so the area now is impervious. And the area goes from one end of the lot to the other. So what we're doing with the landscaping is actually adding impervious area and adding pervious area rather and reducing the impervious. And as we understand it, the way the lot is now designed, we're in compliance with the zoning code.
Okay. Thank you for walking me through that.
Thank you. I just have a couple of brief questions. So how many parking spots does the existing lot hold now? Is it going to be the same amount? Is it gaining spaces or losing a couple or is it, you say the same?
I, I believe it's, it's just about the same. They're not, they're not marked right now, so, so it's just about the same.
Yeah, I mean, I was up there looking at it a couple of times because obviously we have the project down the street that was ahead of you, which I looked at up there a couple of times as well, I've been to the lot, but it, hard to tell, like you say.
Yeah, it, it would appear to me that it's just about the same.
Okay. So basically, the way the traffic pattern working there now is basically going to be the same type of traffic pattern that's going to be, existing will continue to exist to some degree.
Right.
I got you. So basically, all the comments that, yep, staff have mentioned, you've addressed, you're willing to work with the stormwater permit, and as Caleb outlined, you said you would, you'd be willing to put in a turnaround space, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Okay, I have no further questions then. Thank you. Any of the board members have any further questions? Okay. So what we need for here is a vote for a site plan.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve the site plan with, I think, the condition, the two, two conditions that you, you mentioned. But I think, well, first of all is the turnaround space, and I, I don't know if I missed the, the first thing that you asked, the attorney.
So approve the site plan with the turnaround space, condition number one, and number two, would that be to, um, they said they're willing to go along with the stormwater permit?
Yes.
That be acceptable? Okay? So just goes...
About the sweeping.
I'm sorry.
Sweeping.
Oh. And, uh, Richard was indicating about the, um, maintaining the parking lot, about keeping it clear, which would be part of, but they want it on the...
That is necessary.
Is that under the stormwater permit condition? Is that how that works?
Yeah, that, that's, that's how we understand it, that we have to keep the, keep the lot clear of debris, so as not to add anything into the stormwater system.
So would, do you anticipate that to be included in the stormwater permit, I think?
We do.
Okay. All right. So do you want that as a condition or do you want that to be in the stormwater permit, Caleb? Either way, or if it's redundant, it's redundant, doesn't matter either way? You're talking about, you know, maintaining it clean?
Yeah. I'll put it alongside the, the stormwater condition.
Okay. So the condition would just be the turnaround and the stormwater permit? Okay. So we have a motion by Caleb to approve the site plan with the approval of the turnaround space with the stormwater permit?
I'll second the motion.
Motion's made and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair vote yes. Any opposition? Hearing none. So we have four in favor, none against, and one abstained. Good luck, wish you well.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay, moving along on the agenda, the next matter on the agenda is a site plan review and a special permit for 62 Gorm Street. 62 Gorm LLC has applied to the Low Planning Board and the Lowell Zoning Board for a site plan review, special permit and various approval to redevelop existing building into two ground-floor commercial spaces totaling approximately 2,000 square feet and five townhouse-style residential units on the second and third floors. The property is in the UMU zoning district and requires site plan review from the planning board under section 11.4.2 to construct more than three dwelling units. Special permit approval under section 6.1.6 to reduce the parking requirement by 50% and special permit approval under Article 12 for the use. The proposal also requires variance approval under section 6.1 from the Lowell Zoning Board of Appeals for relief from the off-street parking requirement and for any other relief as requested by the Lowell Zoning Ordinance. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for the record, my name is John Geary of the Law Offices of Geary &amp; Geary LLP, 32 Church Street, Lowell, Mass. I'm here tonight representing the applicant, 62 Gorm Street LLC. And with us tonight is Leo Montero. Leo is the principal of 62 Gorm LLC. We also have Hushmand Afshar, also known as Hushy. He's the, it's the engineer for the project, and he'll be explaining the site plan for us tonight. As the chairman mentioned, we're here tonight seeking site plan approval and special permits in order to redevelop this property, which is located in the UMU zoning district, consists of about 3,196 square feet of land. It has a vacant two-and-a-half-story building on it that's been, that has really dilapidated, been vacant for several years. been vacant for several years right now. 62 Gorham Street is located in the downtown historic district at the very busy intersection, very visible and busy intersection of the, intersection of Appleton and Gorham Streets. The existing structure was the former site of the Danus Fruit and Confectionery Market. Danus operated out of the entire first floor. They had some kitchen space on the second floor, as well as two residential units. The building, as I said, is currently vacant and in disrepair, with a portion of the rear roof having collapsed into the property. The redevelopment of this building will, will require a complete interior and exterior restoration, along with extensive structural work in order to restore the building back to its, its historical standards and enhance the structural integrity of the building. The applicant is proposing to use the existing footprint of the building, which encompasses virtually all of the lot except for a small portion, an alleyway along the north side of the property that runs from, from the front to the back of the property. The proposal calls for the redevelopment of the existing structure into a mixed-use building. The first floor will have two ground-floor commercial units, and the, the upper two floors will have five residential units. The residential units will range in size from 702 square feet to 921 square feet. The, those units will be townhouse-style units. The elevation plans that we've presented tonight have been worked on in conjunction with Steve Stoll, the Historic Board, and we're completed with the idea of bringing this property back to its, its historical standards. Of course, we'll still need the Historical Board approval, and we hope to be on the agenda for that, for their next meeting in November. The applicant's also been working closely with David Cola, the Building Commissioner, in order to plan for the restoration of the facade and shore up the structural integrity of the building. If any of the members have been by the building, you'll see that there's been some interior demolition that has commenced. That was done with the oversight of the Building Commissioner and done in order to shore up the structural integrity of the building. It should also be noted by this board that the applicant has an impeccable reputation with the Building Commissioner and the DPD. He works collaboratively, collaboratively with Bro, with both. His most recent project in the city was, was the redevelopment of 1186, 1180 Middlesex Street and the carriage house associated with that old mansion. He brought that property back to life. It's fully tenanted, the tenants are very happy, the neighbors are very happy with the job that he's done there. He's a hands-on contractor and property manager, and he intends to do the same with this project when he's, when all, when all is said and done. And most importantly, bring the property back to life and, and produce tax revenues for the city as well. One of the challenges that we face with this property is that we have no off-street parking whatsoever. The applicant, and for that reason, the applicant's requesting a special permit pursuant to 6.16 of the ordinance, which will allow us to reduce our parking requirement by 50% because we're within 1,500 feet to a municipal parking facility. So under the existing zoning, we're required to have two parking spaces per residential unit, which brings us to 10 parking spaces. If we apply, if we're granted the special permit for the reduction by 50%, our parking requirement would be at five off-street parking spaces. But despite the fact that we don't have any off-street parking or can't provide any off-street parking, the applicant's confident that there are other accommodations that can be made to alleviate the parking concerns. For example, the property is located directly across the street from a outside municipal parking facility that's, that's underutilized, or hardly ever any cars in that parking lot. The property is also within a few hundred feet to the Edward J. Early parking garage and a close walk to the Gallagher Transportation Terminal, all of which allow for convenient access to public transportation and municipal parking. There's also, as we all know, rideshare programs are a way of life in urban settings, and we imagine that our tenants will take use, take advantage of that as well. The applicant will be providing indoor bike storage in the common area of the residential portion of the building for any residents that, that wish to use bike, bikes as transportation or for the form of transportation. We've also provided the board with a parking allotment letter from the Parking Director, indicating that the Edward J. Early Junior Garage has sufficient capacity to handle any overnight demand associated with the redevelopment of this property. Naturally, we'll be seeking a variance from the Zoning Board of Appeals for the lack of off-street parking. As far as trash and recycling, the, the applicant intends to hire a private contractor to manage that aspect of the project with, with bins. The site plan illustrates this trash storage area on the first floor in the common area to the rear of the building. The, the trash pickup will be picked up as necessary, whether that's once or twice a week. There's also a common laundry and, as I mentioned, vertical bike storage for the tenants that, that wish to take advantage of that. In review of the comments from the staff, most of the comments are, all of the comments are very favorable, and essentially, comments one through seven are factual and speak to, to things that I've already mentioned in my presentation or my narrative. Comment number eight suggests that we don't need a landscape plan because the property is essentially all, all building, and we agree with that. Comment number nine, it talks to exterior lighting. We have oversight here from the Historic Board, so we'll be, we have been and will continue to work with Steve Stoll in order to, to provide adequate and appropriate lighting for the project. The neighborhood planner, the director of, of planning, both endorse this project. They, they see that the project is transformational for the neighborhood. I agree with that. I, from, I realize I'm representing the applicant here, but I'm also in a butter. My, my, my office is within 300 feet of this property, and from, from a butter standpoint, the neighborhood is in dire need of some renovation, some, some, somebody coming in and, and taking on a, a task, a project like this will be an incredible enhancement to the neighborhood. There are a lot of comments from the Engineers' Office, and I'll have Hushy go through those in a minute. We did check, we did, the applicant did have the sewer line for this property inspected by videotape, and it appears that that is suitable for reuse, so we will be dealing with that for the Engineer Department. The engineer also suggests that we replace the sidewalks in front of this property. We're, we're happy to go along with that, with that recommendation or suggestion as a condition of the approval, and, and we'll be working with the stormwater team for the city as well in order to get a stormwater permit, and happy to make that a condition of the, of the approval. So at this time, I'd like to, to pass the presentation on to Hushy, who will go through the site plan, and then Leo will review the, the architectural and elevations with the board. So Hushy, if you could. You're on, you're on mute, Hushy.
Okay.
There you go.
I was always told not to talk much, so. So, good evening, board members. My name is Hushman Afshar from Taj Engineering LLC in Lowell. The, as Attorney Geary pointed out, the existing building, the footprint of the existing building is not, does not change at all. The southerly side of the building sits exactly right on the property line, and for a good portion of it, there is a party wall between the two buildings. The front of the building sits about, sits back about four feet from a right-of-way line, the Gorham Street right-of-way line, and the north side of the building is about six feet from the northerly property line. And the back end of the building pretty much sits in the, on the easterly property line. A, a footprint with respect to the boundaries is pretty much what is expected from a urban setup, an inner-city building. The comments from the Engineering Department, we, we actually, we can comply, or we have complied with all of them. The initial intent of the plan was actually just a plot plan, but for the sake of a site, site plan, definitely all the utilities will be added. The, the, the site plan is already on the City of Lowell datum, and the, the comment about the roof slope, the gable, what is shown on the plan right now is actually, if I remember correctly, is the slope or the gable of the proposed roof when the building is converted into a three-story building. The, we have already, as Attorney Geary pointed out, the, inside the building, structurally, there are some structural issues. It has been, the building has been abandoned for, for a long time, and the elements have done, took a toll on it. But we have already started, and we are in the process of making the structural framing of the building sound, even for the process of demolition and further renovation alterations and remodeling of the building. I have personally been involved in several meetings along with the applicant and Mr. Foley, the Building Commissioner, and Steve, the historian, I'm sorry, the, the representative of the Historical Commission. And we are, it seems to me, we are all on the same page, and there is a full harmony in terms of progress and, you know, updating and renovating this, this, this beautiful structure. Other than that, I maybe, I'll open it up to any questions if you might, you might have.
Thanks. Before we take questions, Leo, would you like to go through the elevations and floor plans?
Absolutely. Good evening, members of the board. My name is Leo Montero. I am the developer, property owner for 62 Gorham Street. Just before I go over the, the plans, one correction, Hushy, thanks for the presentation. The, the front roof, I believe, just needs to be updated. The gable in the front, it's from the, you know, if you look at the renderings, the, the roof in the back, in the third-floor addition is proposed correctly, but in the front, it just needs to be updated, just a note, which we can do that fairly easily, just to mimic the existing condition. I'll just show my screen here. So as, as mentioned by Attorney John Geary, we are preserving as much of the existing structure as possible. We have been working with the Building Department in order to do so, in order to salvage most of the structure as possible, even though a lot of the interior structure will have to be rebuilt. As you can see here, the existing layout of the building was two commercial spaces being utilized by the same owner, commercial space A and commercial space B. Let me just, there we go. Commercial space A and commercial space B. There was no entrance, private entrances for the units. The units were just upstairs. As you can see here, you would have to go through the commercial spaces to go up to the units. And on the third floor of the existing house, there were two bedrooms over there. One of the things that we're also proposing is obviously to bring the building, the entire structure up, up to today's code. And in order to do that, we would have to sacrifice some of the commercial spaces, but we still feel that both spaces are marketable as they are currently designed. So we are introducing to this commercial space A, you know, a little common lobby between the tenants and the patrons of the commercial space, and also the tenants for the building, so they would go up here through a set of stairs to go up to the units. Back here, as John Geary, the attorney, mentioned, the vertical bike storages, we are proposing five bike storages, vertical bike storages, which would, equals one per unit. The trash would be managed by a subcontractor. They would be doing that on a, as need basis, either twice a week or depending on the type of tenants we have, you know, three times a week, you know, once a week. It really, really will depend on, on the need. The basement, we will be building some unfinished areas in the basement for the commercial storage spaces as an added bonus, since we have good height on the existing basement on this portion area, on the portion back area of the building. We're on the second story now. This is the first floor of the residential spaces. As noted on the application, we are proposing five townhome-style units for this building, meaning first floor will be living quarter, just living rooms and kitchens and a half bathroom, and then upstairs, the bedrooms and additional bathrooms as well. This is the front of the building, meaning the original structure, where the two existing units were currently located at. We are keeping them in the same place, being respectful of the historical windows that, that must remain. So we're able to design a building where bedrooms are in line with where the existing historic windows will have to stay in place. A common hall will continue here, so one unit to the right, one unit to the left. As you can see, the common hall, this back area of the building is where the kitchen used to be for Danuses. So there used to be a large commercial kitchen here where they used to make the candy and, you know, all the stuff that they used to sell. So we are proposing three townhome units here, which upstairs is where we are proposing the new, the new proposed addition. So as you can see, there's one unit here, one here, and one here with the stairs that will go upstairs. I would like to point out as well the secondary means of egress for the building, which currently there is none present. So we are improving that aspect as well. So the residents will also be able to access the units either from the end, from the, from the back of the building, but also have, will be able to egress the building from here. And then on the, on the top floor, we, we have the front units, the original units in the original house. There are one bed, you know, it's pretty much a suite up on the attic. There's good ceiling space, there's a good attic space here. And then on the three units that we're proposing out back, a good-sized bedroom here with a bathroom. And then on this portion of the building, since we are landlocked on, you know, between this lot and this lot, we will not be providing any windows to these rooms. We are providing light tunnels for natural light purposes. So, you know, the, the home office is nice, well illuminated. And as we all know, you know, a home office has been an attractive, an attraction nowadays in units, and a must for most people. So I believe we are fulfilling a community need there as well. We also have, provide the city with some renderings, obviously, the colors, the lights. We will be working with Steve Stoll on that. We have started the process. Here, we can see where we're proposing the addition. I would like to note that some of these windows will be deleted, just so, in order for us to meet building code requirements. That has been brought up to our attention, and as we were doing more advanced plans, some of the windows will be relocated and/or deleted. And this is where we were landlocked, so this is how pretty much it will look. And this is where we were landlocked, so this is how pretty much it will look from, you know, once we're done. I would like to open up for questions if there is any.
Well, so, thank you, Leo. So, Mr. Chairman, ultimately, this project and the project that we'll be presenting next at eighty Gorham Street are really transformational for this neighborhood. The applicant will be investing, you know, upwards of four million dollars into these projects. We meet the standards of the master plan and sustainable law twenty-five, twenty-twenty-five. We believe we meet the criteria for issuance of the special permits and the site plan approval and respectfully request approval tonight for all three. We're happy to answer any questions of the board members or the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. At this point in time, I'll open the matter up to the public. Does anybody like to speak in favor of this project? On sixty-two Gorham Street, anyone like to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? Hearing none? Anybody like to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? Hearing none? Anybody like to, have any comments in general or speak at all? Anyone like to speak? Speak. No one present to speak? At this time, I'll put it over to the board members. Any of the board members have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, before the board begins to deliberate, I do want to, for the record, state that I will be recusing myself on this application.
Mr. Vashet will not be voting on this matter? Any of the board members have any questions?
I have none.
Mr. Lockhart?
No.
Muscle, any questions?
No, I don't, Chairman.
Okay. Caleb?
Thank you, Chairman. I, I find similarities of this project with some of the past ones that we have dealt with with regard to parking situation. Now, when I, when I went to this site, I park on the municipal lot across and it's certainly that there are more parking and it's more accessible to downtown here and also to the Gallagher Terminal. But notwithstanding the many potential alternatives to car ownership, I do feel that the common, the common theme of urban development and also the requirement to waive parking spaces kind of demand a more standard approach to that. I would say, what's the word for it? Transportation management plan that we've asked for for other projects of similar, that have similar challenges with dealing with parking spaces. So, so I might entertain the idea that we would like the applicant to also put together a transportation management plan for this application to highlight the various resources that, transportation alternative and also alternative parking that could, I would say, offset the parking demand with the lack of onsite parking in this case. And with, also with the element that what's the landlord will, can provide such information to the future tenants to, to kind of promote, to promote alternative mode of transportation and also mitigate the lack of parking onsite. So I suggest this is to applicant, but also for the board member to consider.
Mr. Chang, that suggestion is a very good suggestion. We, and you're correct, we have done this with other similar projects in the downtown area that cannot provide any parking. So we're happy to incorporate a transportation management plan that will work with the DPD on, DPD staff on as a condition of the approval.
Thank you very much, Attorney Gary. That's all I have, Chairman.
Thank you, Caleb. Any comments, Russell?
Uh, no, not really. I mean, I think it's, I, I think the memo summarizing from the DPD encapsulates that the city's very excited about this project. I think it's a great reuse of a building that's been vacant for a long time. I love that you're incorporating indoor bike facilities into the property itself. But I agree with Member Chang's comments that if we're going to be waiving parking requirements on a regular basis to facilitate downtown urban development, it would make sense to have some sort of standard, have some sort of standard transportation demand management plan about sort of how a landlord or property owner is going to convey to residents alternative options to using cars. So I don't know if that's something that could be, start to be included as part of a special permit application when it comes to waiving parking requirements. I don't know if we want to create some, I don't think it's something we can do tonight, but I'm just kind of curious as to other comments from the board members about that item, because it has come up a couple times. But other than, other than that, I think you'll be working with the historic board regarding lighting. This is not really something we need to touch tonight. I think that encapsulates my comments.
I just have a couple of comments. Obviously, looking for everything staff has said and what the other board members have said, I do find that it is, it is a good project. I like the idea what Caleb said about the transportation management plan. I think we've been doing a lot more of those recently, and I think Mr. Geary, you might have been involved in a couple of them now. There's the fact that a lot of these facilities in the downtown area do not have that much of parking, if any. I know that you mentioned how some of it's in the early parking garages, close parks similarly, but in fact, you know, with the transportation management plan, you know, basically telling people, you know, what the bus schedule is, what the train schedule is, what the alternative parking is in the neighborhood, across the street, in the parking garages, I think that would be definitely a improvement to the project that the people know what the alternatives are. So I think that's a good suggestion by Caleb, as counsel said, he's in agreement with that plan. So I think that plan would be a good condition to impose, along with basically, I think the only other condition was they agreed to take care of the sidewalks and the wheelchair ramp. So the other, only condition I would see at this time would be basically, you know, follow through with the stormwater permit. Besides that, I think everything else has been covered. We had some good feedback by planning staff. The DPD indicated they didn't think landscaping was necessary due to the fact of the building occupies the entire site. You know, I remember this being the old Danish market for a long period of time. Okay, so I have nothing further on that. So what we need here is that we have a site plan, a special permit for the reduced parking, and a special permit for the use. So I'll make a motion for the special permit for the reduced parking with the condition that the applicant submit a transportation management plan, which will include alternative parking and work with DPD and staff to accommodate that plan as well as to cooperate and get the stormwater permits as needed. I'll make that motion with those two conditions.
The second motion?
Motion, okay, motion second by Caleb. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none? So we have four in favor, none against. So that motion carries. The next motion we'd need would be a special permit for the use. I'll make the same motion to approve with the same two conditions, with the transportation management plan, with alternative parking, and this stormwater permit as well for the special permit for the use. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Lockhart. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none? That motion carries four in favor, none against. The next matter will be the motion for the site plan.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the site plan with the following conditions, that the applicant work with the historic board regarding outside lighting and exterior materials to be used. Secondly, would be the sidewalk and wheelchair ramp repair. The third would be the stormwater management plan. And then transportation management plan, we incorporate that condition into it as we discuss.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor by Mr. Lockhart with four conditions. Do we have a second? I'll second the matter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none? That motion carries four in favor, none against. Okay, so that project has been approved with the site plan and the two special permits.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome, Counselor. Moving along in the agenda, now we're going on to eighty Gorham Street. Site plan review and special permit, eighty Gorham Street. New Gorham LLC has applied to the Low Planning Board and the Low Zoning Board for a site plan review, special permit, and various approval to redevelop existing building into two ground-floor commercial spaces and twelve residential units. The property is the UMU zoning district and requires a site plan review from the planning board under section eleven point four-two to construct more than three dwelling units. Special permit approval under six point one-six to reduce the parking requirement by fifty percent, and special permit under article twelve for the use. The proposal also requires various approval under section six point one from the zoning board with appeals for relief from the off-street parking requirement and other releases required by the Lowell zoning audit. Do we hear from the applicant, please?
Mr. Chairman, before we begin testimony, just to note that I will be recusing myself on this application as well. Attorney Gary, you reminded me when you said your office wasn't a butter. It dawned on me that my employer isn't a butter. That's why I'm recusing myself, so.
I assumed as much, just to check out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, again. And for the record, my name is John Geary of Geary and Geary LLP, thirty-two Church Street, Lowell, Mass. I represent New Gorham LLC. And again, with us tonight is Leo Montero, the principal of New Gorham LLC, and Mr. Afshar of Taj Engineering, the engineer for the project. As the chairman mentioned, we're requesting a site plan, we're requesting site plan approval and special permits in order to develop this property at eighty Gorham Street, which is also in the UMU zoning district, sits on approximately five thousand seventy-nine square feet of land with a vacant dilapidated three-story building situated on it. Eighty Gorham Street's also in the downtown historic district, so we have our historic board oversight here. It's located just a few buildings off the corner of the intersection of Gorham and Appleton Street. There's a building separating sixty-two Gorham and eighty Gorham. The block consists, so the block consists of a mix of office, retail, and residential space. The existing building was condemned by the building commissioner back in two thousand nineteen. The facade of the building is bowing in. If you've been by the building, I'm sure you've noticed this, the facade is bowing in toward Gorham Street. The applicant has been working with structural engineers in order to secure the stability, structural stability of the building, which is a very complex process. The property was previously occupied by a store in the first floor and five residential units on the upper floors. The redevelopment of this property will again require a complete interior-exterior restoration of the property. There's extensive structural work to the facade of the property that I previously mentioned, but the idea is to bring the property back to its historical standards. The applicant is proposing to use all of the existing footprint of the, of the building. He's going to demolish the one-and-a-half-story, the rare one-and-a-half-story portion of the building, which is unsalvageable, and expand that rare portion of the property by building a twenty-by-forty-two-foot four-story addition. Once completed, the property will consist of two ground-floor commercial units and twelve residential units. The residential units will range in size from five hundred and thirty-three square feet to a thousand forty-four square feet. In addition to working with structural engineers, the applicant has been working with Steve Stoll, the historic board, and David Fuller, again, as the building commissioner for the city, in order to, to plan for the interior demolition and exterior and interior demolition and restoration. The site plan renderings and landscape plan shows the applicant's intentions with regard to the open space in the rear of the property. There is a discrepancy between the site plan and the landscape plan with regard to open space in the rear of the property. The applicant intends to use pavers for the area, not grass or green space as indicated in the site plan. That was vetted through the, with the DPD staff, and they have no problem with that. The pavers are pervious materials, so that should be a suitable alternative. The applicant will also be repairing the existing retaining wall along the rare lot line of the property. That's going to allow for some usable open space in the rear of the property. There's also a few existing trees that will remain in place, and the applicant will plant some additional shrubbery. The project, much like the sixty-two Gorham Street project, does not allow for any off-street parking. So we, we're again requesting a permit, a special permit pursuant to six point one-six to reduce our parking requirement by fifty percent because we are within fifteen hundred feet of a municipal parking garage. So under the existing zoning, we're required to have twenty-four off-street parking spaces. We have none, but by applying the reduction of the fifty percent pursuant to the special permit, we would be required to have twelve off-street parking spaces. Again, we have none, and we will be seeking relief from the zoning board of appeals for lack of off-street parking. Much like the sixty-two Gorham Street project, the applicant does not feel that that is going to be problematic for the redevelopment of this property. We're again in close proximity to the Edward Early parking garage. We've provided a parking allotment, let our, from this parking director indicating that there's sufficient capacity in that garage for this project as well. We're in close, we're a close walk, half a mile, to the Gallagher Transportation Terminal. There's the outside municipal parking facility directly across the street from this property as well, so we feel we can handle any demands of parking. And we will also, of course, incorporate or happy to incorporate a condition that we provide a parking demand plan to the, to the DPD staff for approval. The applicant intends to manage the trash and recycling in the same manner that he's going to at sixty-two Gorham Street by having a trash and recycling storage area. The bins will be brought to the front of the property as necessary, whether that's once, twice, or three times a week. We're also providing common laundry and vertical bike storage at this development as well. The DPD staff comments for this project are also very favorable, starting with comment number six. The staff notes the, that the applicant has gone above and beyond in his efforts to maximize the open space for the project. He's, you know, with twelve units, we feel that it's a, you know, any open space we can provide is a good thing, so we're going to have that outdoor area. There's also, as you can see from the There's also, as you can see from the rendering, there's some balconies for a few of the units, which is a great amenity for those units. Comment number seven inquires about snow storage and removal. The applicant intends to manage the snow by way of a, of a snow blower, and he intends to push the snow towards the rear lot line so that outdoor space remains open. The staff, the neighborhood planner, and the Director of DPD all endorse this project and again, see the impact that this project will have, the positive impact that this project will have on the, on the neighborhood and the city as a whole. We meet the goals of the city master plan and sustainable role twenty twenty-five by providing additional housing and increasing the tax revenue for the city. The engineer, I will have Hushy go through the engineering comments again, but, you know, the engineers note that they would like the sidewalks repaired. Again, we're agreeable to doing that for this project as well. So at this time, I'll turn the presentation over to Hushy so he can go through the site plan, and then Leo will go through the, the elevations and architectural aspects of the project.
Good evening, board members. Once again, my name is Hushman Afshar from Taj Engineering LLC here in Lowell. The proposed, the existing building again is, sits almost in the middle of the existing lot. You have about over seven feet on the southerly side, a corridor that leads front to back. On the left side, you have a passage about five feet wide. And again, the building, which is generally in that part of Gorham Street, sits back from the street layout, layout line, right away line about, about four feet. The, the small addition in the back of the existing building, as it was mentioned, is going to get demolished, and the proposed building is going to extend all the way back for another forty-two feet. That leaves behind a very cozy and cute backyard, which was initially thought it would be grass, but now is going to be pervious pavers. There will be a leaching pit, underground chamber infiltration system installed in the back that will receive all the roof runoff from the entire roof and percolates, percolates into the ground. And also, the general slope is such that the ground runoff, although we don't have too much of a ground, will be diverted towards the proposed leaching, leaching chamber. The comments of the engineering department regarding utilities, we will, we will, we will definitely comply to that. The existing utilities that had been serving the building, they will be examined, the sewer line will be videoed, and if needs to be remedied, it will be remedied. I have inspected that pipe, actually, the particulate sewer line and other services myself. In terms of, and the datum being on the city of Lowell datum, we have already converted that, that shouldn't be a problem. And in terms of, basically, the engineering wants probably the, the access hole for the chamber to be finished by clay bricks. We have no, no, no issue with that, we will comply to that. And with that, I think we pretty much meet any other requirement. Again, I have been, along with the applicant, I have been into several meetings with the Building Commissioner and the representative of the Historical Commission. All the important issues have been discussed and coordinated. Same thing with the structural issues. Wild demolition, every effort is being made to make sure the demo part is safe and structural integrity, all the different structural components are retained and maintained till we get into the really renovation and rehabilitation sequence phase for the renovation and alteration and upgrading of the building to the proposed rendering that we saw. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board, my name is Leo Montero. I am the developer with New Gorham LLC from sixty, sixty-seven South Bedford Street in Burlington, Mass. On this project, I'll start with the, with the renderings. As you can see here, the existing brick building is the historical structure that it will remain. We will be doing all the structural work needed to bring, you know, this property back to code and, and, you know, respecting all safety features, et cetera. We are proposing the addition in the back, maximizing hopefully most of the lot, but also being mindful of, you know, the open space, you know, trying to work with the city and the residents on the, the needs of the open space requirements as well. On the floor plans, currently the building, this front portion of the building is the existing historical structure. We are on a grade level on the first floor. Two existing commercial spaces that are existing are to remain. This existing hallway also is to remain. These are all existing conditions that the building, the building currently presents. We are maximizing those and keeping, keeping them as is. The residents, residents will come in through here. We are going to have a lobby for packages, mailboxes, et cetera. This is a common hallway. As you can see here, we are also taking into account vertical bike storage needs for the residents. This is a common area door for the residents only, not the commercial space tenants, as well on this side of the building. So the residents will have access through the sides of the building as well, away from the commercial tenant space customers. Trash storages are also present for the commercial spaces as well as the residents. And on the first floor, in the back addition, which is this area in the back, we are proposing two, two bedroom units. On the second floor, on the existing house, on the existing building, the front portion of the building, we currently have two existing units that are to remain. Obviously, they are fully gutted at the moment and will be brand new by the time we're done. This area all is existing, the common hallway, the common stairs are existings, and they will remain. Here is where the new addition is with the common hallway and with also the secondary means of egress. Another benefit, another improvement that we are adding to the building is it will be the removal of the fire escapes that are currently present on both elevations on the second and third floor of the building. Once we are done with the project, we will be adding, you know, the secondary means of egress, so we, we can make the exterior even more appealing. And as you can see in the back, as, you know, same, same idea as downstairs, we will have two units, one on the right, one on the left, and these units upstairs will have the balconies as mentioned and as shown. Moving up to level three on the historic portion of the house, same idea as downstairs, two units, one on the right, one on the left. These are existing conditions, existing set of stairs, existing common hall. We are simply renovating the units, all windows are to remain, et cetera. The addition in the back will also, on level three, will accommodate three townhome style units where the units itself, the units themselves will have set of stairs that will go up to the bedroom level, which will be upstairs. So they'll be very nice and comfortable units with balconies as well, the two units in the back, but this is the common hallway with the entrances for each unit. And going up to the fourth floor and top floor on the original portion of the building, we will have one existing unit, which is also currently an existing condition that will, will, will remain. Obviously, we will be renovating the entire unit. Windows are to remain, there are good ceiling space, good ceiling height. And in the back portion of the addition, you will see the bedrooms for the townhome, the townhome units as well. So each townhome unit will have two bedrooms and a, a good-sized bathroom with good-sized closets and et cetera. So that is the, obviously, on the exterior as well, we will be working with Steve Stoll on any needed changes, any required colors for the storefront, lights, et cetera. Now, if you have any questions, I am available.
Leo, do you have the landscape plan available that you could just review?
Yeah, so here, the landscape plan where we are showing the existing trees that are to remain. So we have a couple of arborvitae's here. These are all existing, they're also shown on, on the renderings. These trees are pretty accurate, actually, to what existing. So we have a couple of, you know, more mature trees, and we have about six arborvitae's right along these lines. There is a retaining wall that is being repaired here, and then the pavers, a little discrepancy here on the plans, but we'll be cleaning these up. The pavers will be shown in the back portion here from the building over to the retaining wall, the pavers will be installed after we are done with the, you know, everything else, pretty much as is shown here in the back.
Thank you, Leo. So again, Mr. Chairman, this project in conjunction with sixty-two Gorham Street are critically important developments to the, to this neighborhood and to the city. We have an applicant that sees the value of our city and is willing to invest millions of dollars in these projects. We meet all criteria for issuance of the special permit and approval of the site plan, and we request approval of all tonight. Happy to answer any questions from the board or the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. At this point in time, I'll turn the matter over to the public. Anybody who's seen them like to speak in favor of this project? Anybody like to speak in favor? In favor, in favor? Hearing none, anybody like to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition, in opposition, hearing none? Anybody have any general comments? Anybody like to speak at all? Hearing none, I'll turn it over to board members. Any board members have any questions? Richard, no? No comments, Mr. Lockhart?
Well, I just think that, you know, it's a great project. Certainly, I am in total favor. They have no specific questions.
Thank you. Caleb, any questions? I see Mr. Gary indicated he put in the transportation management plan. I think he mentioned that, obviously, after going over sixty-two, I think he's in favor of doing that for number eighty Gorham Street, so that benefits.
I recognize this pretty much right next door, and I see a similar, similar challenges there, so I think I, I'm, I'm satisfied with, oh, and my correct would be the transportation demand management plan. I've messed up, missed up the demand in the wording, but I think that, that will satisfy the, the transportation concern. I'm looking through the, the comments, and I notice engineering have some, have a few comments about like, about some datum and utilities, and, and, and I understand that the applicant also mentioned that the, the rear yard will have some changes made, such as the, the paver, so I just want to check with the applicant whether your plan have reflected the changes that the engineering office have commented on or not.
The, Mr. Chang, the, the plan does reflect the changes. I'm not, not exactly sure which, which comment you're referring to with regard to the engineer. We're proposing pavers in the back of the property, it's all asphalt right now, so that's certainly an improvement. We're proposing a, a leaching basin as Mr. Afshar mentioned. Were there any specific comments that you were concerned about?
Let's see. So as I see that they, so they mentioned about the detailing, using it to include clay bricks, and then also the rim of the leaching chamber should be specified. So, so I, I'm reading the, the staff comment from October twelfth on page, I will say, three to four?
Right, so Hushy, is it safe to say that, that the updated plan will address all of those comments?
Okay.
Yes, of course. I mean, any rim elevation obviously will take care of the adjacent slopes. As the applicant mentioned, the, the, the back, the site plan, the backyard, the small courtyard was supposed to be grass, but of course now it's pavers, pervious pavers, so that will be obviously shown as pavers, and it will have a general, about two percent slope toward, towards the, towards the rim of the leaching chamber.
Okay.
And like I said, any other comments that engineering has said, we agree with it and we, we comply with it. They are, they are all very basics and, and we accept that.
Okay. So Chairman, I might propose that as a condition to just, to address the engineering comments on the, on the staff comments dated.
Of the engineering staff, okay.
Yep.
Gotcha.
Thank you, Chairman, that's all I have.
Thank you. Russell, any question or comment?
One question to the applicant. I think the staff comment memo mentioned snow storage. I was wondering if you could touch on where you were proposing for that? I wasn't sure if I missed it on the site plan.
Leo, do you want to address that?
Yeah, so the, we do have the, we will need a small plow, a, you know, a seven-foot plow or less in order to plow the alleys and the side driveways, which is pretty tight. We do have, you know, good room in the back where we can shovel and push the snow towards it, even between the retaining wall and the fence, there is an area there that we can store snow and also keep the patio in the back, you know, as useful as possible during the winter months for the residents as well. So our idea is to, you know, push the snow towards the back of the property and store it in, in one of the corners in the back.
And so, since these alleyways are going to be used, it sounds like as ways to egress and access around the building, is, is the owner going to be maintaining that in the winter months?
Absolutely, it's part of our property. Yep, we, the alleyway on the left, it's entirely ours, and then there is an easement, we share half of the alleyway, the alleyway in the, in the left, in the right, I'm sorry, in the right, in the left, I'm sorry, with Mrs. Donegan. But we also, we will be maintaining them, I believe that's already an agreement that is in. I believe that's already an agreement that is in place in between the neighbors, and we're just going to keep it as is. But we'll, yes, we will be responsible maintaining both sides.
Okay. And so just in general, so I understand, so is the green space going to be usable by all the residents or just primarily the lower-level residents, and the patios are going to be used, or the, yeah, the patio porch is going to be used by the upper-level residents?
The, where you see green spaces, we are proposing pavers. They will be used. It is going to be open common area to all residents. The residents in the units below on the grade level, they will have their own balcony, their own patio area, which is a little bit elevated. You can, you can see it on the plans, and there is an area where you can see. Well, they will have their own, you know, they can put their own chair and stuff, but we can figure out some sort of, you know, privacy screen for the units below. But the idea is for the area in the back to be used by the residents, and, you know, if they wanted to go outside for some fresh air, even, you know, walk around with, you know, a small puppy or something, they have an area to do so.
I think that's all my comments. I think it's a great project.
Thank you.
Thank you. I do agree with a lot of the comment staff and also what was brought up by the other board members, and I thank Attorney Gary for putting the transportation management plan. I think he realized that the board requested it on the other project that we just approved, and obviously, this is very similar to it, so it was good hindsight of him to put that in for the approval. I think the board will be leaning in that direction. I think it's a good idea to put it in there when we have a parking situation that is very similar to the last one he, project that has just been approved, so I applaud him for that matter. So basically, looking along, we have, so this requires basically the same approval as the last project on Gorham Street. We'll need a site plan, a special permit for the parking, and a special permit for the use. So what's requested the board here? So we'll need three different votes. I'll start off by making a motion to approve the special permit for the parking with the condition that the applicant provide a transportation management plan, that the application reconstruct the sidewalks, the furniture of the property, include the resettling of the curb and the new concrete sidewalk constructed to meet the city ADA standards, the applicant to apply for and receive a stormwater permit, as well as to follow through with all the suggestions made by the comments by engineering as outlined in the memorandum on October twelfth-twenty-one from Francesca to planning members as well as the applicant's attorney, which is basically to follow through. They only have a couple of things like add the offsets between the existing building and the property lines, note on the finished grade, remove the line that is the same elevation as the rim, sort of follow through with all those comments. So with those four conditions, as indicated, I'll make the motion to approve the special permit for the parking.
I'll second the motion.
Motion second by Mr. Lockhart. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none? That motion carries. Four in favor, none against. Now we need a special permit for the use. I'll make the same motion for the special permit for the use for the reconstruction of the sidewalks, the transportation management plan, go along with the engineering comments, and the stormwater permit. Do we have a second on that motion?
A second motion.
Okay, we have a motion second on that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none? That special permit carries. Four in favor, none against. So the last will be the site plan. I'll make a motion to approve the site plan with the same conditions, to reconstruct the sidewalks, work with DPD for the transportation management plan, follow through with the engineer comments, and same with the stormwater permit. Do we have a second on the motion?
I'll second the motion.
Mr. Lockhart, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none? So that matter carries. Four in favor, none against, and one extension as indicated. So I believe those are all approved. Good luck, and thank you, Counsel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you all for your time this evening.
Good night. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving along on the agenda, do we have any other further notices and notices from board members?
Because the historic board met, as we were meeting tonight, I'm going to delay my report and the whole report in two weeks. Our next meeting is the second Monday of November.
Any other board members, any comments? No? Okay, now we're going to take a motion to adjourn.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made by Mr. Vashik. We have a second?
Second.
Second? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? That motion carries. We adjourn. Good night, everyone. Thank you very much.